Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for March 27th to order. And we will begin with the roll call.
Counselor Kizer.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osset.
Here.
And Guest Counselor Chris Roy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
And Counselor Lewis is absent, and in his seat tonight is Guest Counselor Jeff Miller.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Great. Here. Very good. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McCoy, do you have additions and deletions this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the additions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Cook. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oops, sorry, I said what they are.
The two additions are, we've got an addition to the legislative 33G, which is our legislative priority bill. It's House Bill 3245. It needs to be approved by the council as we're working on a fix for a land use planning kind of an issue. And 6C is the Emergency Warming Centers' report for this last winter's activities.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion passes. Are there any counselor comments? Counselor Anderson.
Surprise, surprise. I want to welcome both of our guest counselors here tonight. I'm glad to see you both here, and I'm especially glad that we have now filled the position on Ward 6, and I look forward to Chris Roy joining the council at the next meeting. I also just want to say in general that, you know, and maybe some of it has to do with the little button I'm wearing today, but, or badge, but I'm terribly sorry that the events transpired as they did on Saturday in terms of the competing situations, different political views at the council, and that's not the way we need to express our differences. We ought to be able to do it without some confrontation. So I'm sorry that happened, but I'm also glad that Salem Police were there to make sure that it didn't get any worse than it did. And I really don't know how bad it got because I wasn't there, but you see reports, and so, you know, I think civilized discourse like we're doing here is the way to resolve things, and I hope that's the way it continues into the future.
We'll try to be calm.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, one piece of information. Glenn Gross is leaving us, unfortunately.
What?
I heard that. Look how hard you did this.
Where's he going?
He's going to the Tarheel State, North Carolina.
Wow.
That's our loss. Fortunately, Lisa Anderson Olgavy has agreed to serve on interim basis as Community Services Director. I do, though, want to take a moment to thank Glenn for his service to the city. He joined us in 2004 and has been the Community Services Development Director for about three years, taking that position over in February of 2014. I believe Glenn's leadership has helped the city move forward on some very significant issues: zoning and planning, building and safety, neighborhood services, housing needs analysis, comprehensive plan amendments, and his quiet, steady leadership with a focus on customer service has really benefited the city. I wanted to thank him publicly this evening. For those who are able, we are having a retirement party for Glenn Friday afternoon from 3 to whenever at the Anderson Room in the library. If you can join us, please, please join us. Again, I wanted to take a moment to thank Glenn for his service.
Yeah, I think we all feel the same, Glenn. We will miss you. You are the calm, calm before the storm in some of this stuff. Really appreciate the work you've done, having worked with you on the Planning Commission and on the council. Just really pleased you've been here, really, but North Carolina, was it? Huh. What, what's the, you want to talk to us a little about what you're, you want to explain North Carolina before you leave?
Well, first of all, I would just like to say that it's been truly an honor and a privilege to have served the city of Salem, and I want to wish the mayor and the council and the city manager and the staff all the very best. I know the future is very bright for Salem, and I expect to hear great things, all the way back in North Carolina. We have family there. My wife's basically has family all over the South, but especially in that part of the South, and our daughter's starting college there next fall.
Wow.
And we just, we just want to try something different, so that's all.
Well, all the best. I'm looking forward to your retirement party, but for tonight, all the best to you, and I know the council and members of the public that are here feel the same way, so thank you, dear.
We'll be here on Facebook for you.
Yeah. We are streaming live on Facebook now, Glenn, so you can't escape us if you're, okay? We have no proclamations this evening, but we do have a presentation from Travel Salem. And Angie Morris here to take us through this.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of council. I'm Angie Aniuuchi, President and CEO of Travel Salem, and I will be presenting the 2017-2020 Strategic Plan for Your Approval this evening. I'd first like to acknowledge and thank Travel Salem Board Members in the room with us tonight: Counselor Steve McCoy and TJ Sullivan, who is Travel Salem's Treasurer. Our Chair, Jim Rasmussen, was supposed to be here this evening, but I don't quite see him here yet, but maybe he'll join us in the middle. The last three-year strategic plan really delivered significant results. Key performance measurements were at record-breaking levels, including estimated economic impact and transient occupancy tax. These measurements are listed in the strategic plan on page 15. Notably, hotel occupancy and average daily rates were also at an all-time high. According to our partners, we've had back-to-back best sports seasons ever. This is due to the strategic investment into sports marketing. This activity, combined with other efforts, has resulted in more sold-out weekend room nights than ever before. We launched wine country tours, new product that can be booked anywhere in the world, six new cycling trails, a redesigned travelsalem.com website featuring a booking engine, Salem Like a Local videos featuring cultural heritage assets, and more. And the industry, in collaboration with the Salem City Council, stabilized Travel Salem's funding, which has given our community a new competitive advantage. This platform of success has given us a running start into the next three years. We will continue our work to innovate product and programs that deliver a return on investment, and we will continue to seek ways to diversify our revenue streams. We will develop new programs, implement and track them, and evaluate and improve them. This cycle of product development ensures efficient and effective results we can all be proud of. We will continue focusing on relevant content that grabs attention and inspires visitors to come here, and most importantly, create content and programs that are actionable so that visitors can quickly and easily purchase product and book their trip to Salem. We will explore growth in the convention sales program, destination development, and social media, all of which are experiencing exponential growth. And we will emphasize initiatives that educate and engage the community on issues and ideas that influence tourism, so that as a community, we are all making a difference in the tourism's, tourism engine's ability to create jobs and enhance quality of life for our citizens. Travel Salem has worked hard over the years to diversify our revenue streams. In 2011, we created and implemented the Wine Country License Plate Program, which to date has generated roughly $1 million in new funds for statewide tourism efforts, and we have received more than $200,000 here locally to market our region. These dollars are hard at work here in Salem, leveraging the TOT dollars to create new marketing programs to expand our reach. In addition, we helped successfully re-secure the Willamette Valley Visitors Association's contract with Travel Oregon, and will take a leadership role in the next few years. WABA's budget will increase from $225,000 to $800,000 next year, and Travel Salem's Director of Marketing and Public Relations, Irene Bernards, will be chairing that group and ensuring Salem's interests are front and center. We will strategically invest in staff, as well as a creative combination of contracting with experts and securing highly qualified volunteers and interns to help us move the needle forward. As mentioned earlier, a unified community marketing strategy can give us a competitive advantage when we compete for sports tournaments and large conventions, as well as when we welcome the millions of leisure visitors here each year. We'll achieve this through proactive outreach and engagement of stakeholders. We will continue to develop planning tools such as our master calendar, and we'll seek ways to work with other industries such as kettle foods and Garmin, for example, so that as their products are exported, the consumers on the other end are reminded that these products are made right here in Salem, Oregon. This is just another way we can expand our brand and reach as a premier tourism destination. Our marketing and communications program is running full tilt, and the next three years we'll see even more results. We'll roll out a fully-vetted branding campaign that uses a bold new voice to position this region as a premier destination. We'll enhance our participation with Travel Oregon and explore new collaboration with Brand USA in ways never available to us before. Social media continues to lead the curve in influencing consumers, and we'll work hard to innovate through all of our social media channels, in particular with emphasis on Facebook and Instagram, as well as Snapchat. Video content is king, and we'll continue to develop new visual content that grabs attention and sells this destination. We have just completed extensive dialogue with downtown stakeholders, and we'll be rolling out a new online presence to beef up how we market and promote downtown Salem. We will continue to collaborate with downtown leaders in all of these efforts. And with the success of the Destination Development Program, we'll be seeking ways to increase its reach and effectiveness in the next three years. Conventions and sports are returning dividends to this community. In the next three years, we'll be rolling out initiatives that dive deeper into the collegiate market, where we see huge upside potential. Our sports committee will evolve into a full-fledged nonprofit sports commission to give us a better edge in securing resources and competing for opportunities. This region has grown to a place where we need to do an inventory of our marketable assets, so we have a complete picture of what's available, and more importantly, what assets we still need. We'll be conducting a thorough inventory of lodging, venues, and facilities. And lastly, we'll be executing an outreach strategy to better match downtown businesses with the needs of visitors on the ground. So when we have a large group in town, our restaurants have timely information to staff up and be ready to provide world-class service to the visitor. We will be looking at a collaboration with the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association on rolling out a pilot project that is technology-based to best manage the system of communication. Hopefully, short and sweet, I hope, ready to answer your questions. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Well, thank you, Angie. Are there any questions, then, for Angie on her report? Yeah, Counselor McCoy?
More comments, since I'm the representative from on that board, and we've been on it for several years before that, and I just want to, one, congratulate Angie on a great job, and the growth in the four or five years I've been involved on that board is just, it's really impressive. But what's really impressive is the fact that the staff's listened to the council the last few years, and is back delivering new products that are going to bring people to the city, whether it's a wine trail, whether it's an ale trail, whether it's the River to Ridge event here in September that's going to bring hundreds of people into town. And I think, you know, as a guy that represented lodging, when you see them saying, geez, we sold out more weekends last year than we ever have, that's a good thing. That means they're doing their job, because that's when they're looking for folks, and the folks that they're, you don't get the business visitors in, you're getting the folks coming into town for an event. And finally, they got into sports, and that has really been a boon to this town, and I think they've really tapped something that we're doing really well in, but that sports committee is so involved, they're now going to make it a commission to even enhance what they're doing farther, and it's everything from the Christmas High School Tournament that they started out of that committee that brings in hundreds of people for most of the weekend during the holiday season and everything else. So I just say I'm proud to be on that board and serve with you, but congratulations to you and your staff, and really a job well done.
Thank you, Counselor McCoy.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I want to know, Angie, how you arranged for the eclipse to come right over Salem? That's the really good thing you did.
Mayor Bennett did it. That's his work right there. It's genius, I'm telling you.
The political issue, yeah. So I'm wondering if you could just-
Thank you, Angie, for noticing that.
Yeah. I'm wondering if you could just comment a little about the eclipse in August, and it seems like the whole town is booked up pretty much.
Yeah, things are really gangbusters. Again, we are expecting on August 21st, 2017, during the Great American Eclipse, anywhere between 30,000 and 50,000 people descending on Salem. This is the best spot to see the eclipse. It'll be almost two full minutes here, and so people, we call them eclipse chasers, are coming from all over the world. We have 200 scientists from Japan coming here. It's really, really exciting, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our community. So Travel Salem has kind of been the convening resource to manage that project, bring partners together, get all of the activities and events, sort of get energy around those, get them created. And then our website, travelsalem.com, has an actual section devoted to the eclipse. We also have an eclipse newsletter to keep consumers engaged as well. We're tracking lodging. Lodging has pretty much evaporated. I think people are renting out their fields for camping at this point and all kinds of things. Dorm rooms are gone. When the state park system opened up reservations for campsites, they were gone. The whole system was gone in like a minute and a half. So the eclipse is just really very powerful. I did want to share with you, sort of something timely, if I can find it in my pile here. I just heard from a staff member today, maybe I'll find it, maybe I won't. Here it is, that we are working with the Oregon Emergency Management System as well. So we've been working with the state of Oregon, Travel Oregon, and law enforcement, public safety, transportation roads and all of that, because all of those systems are going to be dramatically impacted by that many people on the ground here. And another sort of leg to that is that apparently we are working with the Oregon Military Department, the Office of Emergency Management, to participate in something that is a, the best way for me, I don't really understand it myself, that's why I have to read it to you. It's a compiled set of data that is laid over the top of an ArcGIS map, and some folks in here might understand what I'm talking about, but this is another resource for folks to learn about events and things that are happening in the area where lodging is, resources, and so it'll be at a much higher level, and so it'll be a real-time tool for visitors on the ground here. So we're also participating with Homeland Security on that front as well. So it's big. I would still really, really encourage Salem to consider keeping the streetlights down and powered off at the time that the eclipse is on. I've heard that that's going to be a challenge for us, but that will, you know, dramatically impact the quality of seeing that event, so hopefully we can still make progress on that. But we are selling glasses at Travel Salem at the, our visitor center, because you cannot just view the eclipse on your own. You have to have something to protect your eyes. It will cause severe damage. So we do have those glasses as well, and, but exciting event and thankful for all the partnership. And actually, OMSI, I forgot to mention, OMSI has, is doing an event at the state fairgrounds, and they have sold out. 8,000 tickets are gone, and amazing, so, yeah.
It is.
Dragster race, race the sun. There's the end.
But the, but the lights won't go out? No?
We can make them.
Is there a breaker somewhere near?
Isn't there a plug?
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, there's no switch.
Could there be a switch, though?
If there was a power outage. If the eclipse causes a power outage, then the lights will go out.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Well, Angie, we can't get it all correct, I guess. Thank you very much. That's a very good report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Were there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, it's time for public comment. Unless there's objection, I'm going to combine Agenda Items 2 and 8. We have not a huge group coming to speak with us tonight, so I thought we'd let everybody get out of here early if they'd like to. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, I'm going to start with Cindy Linaser.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Cindy Linaser, and I'm the Deputy Director for Community Action Agency. Our address is 2475 Center Street. Our mission is to empower people to change their lives and exit poverty, and we do this through vital services and community leadership. As our mission calls us, community action has been on the front lines of the Emergency Warming Centers for the last five years. We have organized and provided structure during the times when weather threatens life that is exposed. Our activation guidelines are at 27 degrees for three continuous evenings and at other times when the wind chill, snow, ice accumulation, or other weather-related issues pose a threat to life. As you can see by the data in your packet tonight, this past winter was unexcusably cold, and temperatures dipped to 12 degrees. We operated 18 nights. To put this in perspective, last year we did four. We saw 412 unique individuals. These individuals stayed 1,382 nights. The local shelters, all local shelters were full, and these 412 lives represent the people that could have died in our community if we wouldn't have opened. As we look forward at operations next year, barriers still exist. The number-one barrier is location, location, location. Asking an organization to loan their building for a date for which we don't know, for a length of time for which we don't know, is the delicate situation we find ourselves in every year. Locations do not typically sit vacant, and when the weather turns, the Emergency Warming Center operations might be turned out when a facility has committed their facility for some other use. The second barrier that we have is we need working partners willing to oversee and manage some of the responsibilities for this unfunded community support, so that all activities do not come to one agency to oversee. Finally, we need to continue to educate our community on what the Emergency Warming Center is and isn't. We consider, we continue to have our biggest barrier of why we do not provide food. We partner with our operations so that we can have our guests access food that is provided within our community. UGM, Caros, Arches, Home, Hosts, and a plethora of community partners provide multiple meals every day. Our mission is to provide lifesaving warmth during hours when no other operation is open. I'd like to thank the city for your swift action last year and the movement that you took to address your landlord at the Delon Honda site. Without that swift movement, we would not have been able to open on our first activation. And your continued support with trash removal, upwards of 30 bags per day, and your emergency managers' communication and monitoring the weather was invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy, and thank you to Community Action Agency for really handling the whole thing so well. It was really well done.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Any questions on this? Yes.
Thank you. I just have one quick question, because I read the report here over the weekend, and I know it said 412 unique guests, and I was just wondering if you had a rough estimate of what, how many beds were occupied per night?
It was over 100 every night.
Over 100 every night.
Our highest evening was 119 beds.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Nanki.
Yes, Chair, thanks for coming down. I tried a couple of times to get on the volunteer system, and it was full all the time. Was there any problems getting volunteer help?
I think the, no, our community stepped up, so we had lots of shifts full. I think the one thing that I would urge our community to do so that we do not have a heart attack every day is to sign up for your volunteer shift earlier. There were times where we were considering if we were going to need to close because we didn't have the needed manpower to open that night, literally that night. So if someone is interested and they see that we're going to activate and we're starting in, you know, two days, get in, sign up right away. We had lots of people that came and showed up without being on the website, which created a little bit of an issue. We'd like to address volunteer training throughout the year. Starting now, we're working with the Planning Committee, because volunteer training is really important. Most of our volunteers are lay folks with a great big heart, and we need to continue to provide structure and have everybody do everything the same way every night, provide stability for us as well as our guests. So we're going to address volunteer support earlier and more often this year.
Excellent.
But thank you to the citizens that did step up. We had 320 unique volunteers, and they did 3,991 hours. If the city or an organization were to pay for this manpower, we would have had to come up with nearly $90,000 worth of wages. So hats off to the volunteers.
Excellent. Great. Counselor McCoy.
Hi, Cindy.
Hi.
Thanks for coming down, and thanks for all the work you did on this.
Thank you.
It was definitely a boon to the community. On this, probably not the case, but it strikes me, where did 27 degrees come from as the point where they open or don't open?
Years ago, before I was involved, that was the standard that was set, and ours has stayed at that level. It is, it is cold, and that is another barrier that we're looking to address, but if we were to change that activation temperature, we would be open more hours, more nights. I'm not saying that that is something that shouldn't be addressed, but with an unfunded effort such as this, this last winter put an extreme strain on the resources that we did have, and with every degree you would potentially move up, you would open more nights, and that's a difficult conversation to have with our community, is the activation temperature.
Thank you. Well, I think it's needed. I mean, I don't know about you, but if it's 32 or below, I think that's, when it's below freezing, and it's freezing water, it's probably freezing everybody else, too. One other question, it had wind chill. Is wind chill included in that when you hit the, so it could be 32 with a 20 mile an hour wind and be the effect, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't open it? Okay.
Exactly. If the temperature read 32 degrees, but the wind chill made it feel like, the feel-like temperature is what we've gone off of. And that's where we got to a feels-like 12 degrees this last year. We were never at 12 degrees, literally. And back to the first question of our night, the 119 were at the location that we operated, which, thank you to First Christian Church. They own the Morgan Building, which the Department of Energy has recently vacated, and because of their swift action of their church's leadership, we were able to have a long-term stay there during the winter hours, or the winter days. But you all allowed UGM to take over the Delon Honda location after we left, and they added an additional 50 people. So if you look at us at 119 with the additional 50 people, we're up at 170-ish people per night.
Do you have a building that you're looking at now for next year? Are you, how does that work? How will you, are you looking at anything right now?
We definitely need to reach out to lots of different people to get the buy-in that we would like to use or we would like to offer our facility for the evening hours. If you're asking me about city locations that we've got our eyes on, there's lots of locations that are available during the evening hours, and one is over at Pringle, um-
Pringle Hall.
Pringle Hall. We operate between 8:00 PM and 6:30 AM. 6:30 is when we'd ask people to go, and that usually ends up being 7:30 before everyone's got up and gone. And people start coming somewhere in between the 7:30, 8:00 hour. So that location would be a nice location for us. It has the right facilities for kitchen and easy cleanup with the way the property is structured. Almost every faith community downtown has been, partner has been asked. There's many that have stepped up, and again, this is one of those variances, and this has happened to us with First Presbyterian, phenomenal partner. They want to be involved, they have a great facility, fire's already looked at it, deemed it available for 70 folks, but the weather hits on the week that they're going to host Interfaith Hospitality Network, which is families that are homeless, and they've wrapped their services and their congregation around that effort for that one week, and we happen to be on the same week. So that's how we got pushed out last year, and you all moved swiftly to help us get the Delon location. So those are the things. If we have more people say yes, we can have a lot more people in line when those things do happen.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
And if the police facility, you have knocked down Delon next year to build the police facility, we'll take that into, just to put that in as a.
Just put your reservation in.
A reservation, yes.
Okay, great.
And if, you're great with eclipses, clearly, Mayor. If you'd like to warm it up next winter, we'd be okay with that as well.
I'll put that on my list of things to do. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much for your leadership and your support last year. We really appreciate it.
Mark Connect, I'm going to call you during the public hearing. You meant to sign up for that. Hazel Patton and John Hawkins.
Do I touch this?
Lightly. Be real gentle with it, though, Hazel.
Somebody was very tall before me. My name is Hazel Patton, and I'm President of the Board of Directors of Salem's Main Street Association. Sharing the podium with me this evening is John Hawkins, who is our interim Executive Director, and we will share this precious three minutes together. So thank you, Council, and thank you, staff, and thank you, visitors, for having us here. Newly formed this last fall, our board is made up of 15 members representing downtown businesses, downtown residents, downtown property owners, and community at large. Many of our board members are here today, and if you'd like to hold your hand up, just to, I'd appreciate it. We are incorporated, have our 501(c)(3), and have been accepted by the Main Street Program, which is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. John will tell you more about the Main Street Program and our invitation to all of you.
Thank you, Hazel. John Hawkins, 5539 Bellflower Court, Southeast part of Ward 4. And as Hazel said, we're now recognized by the Oregon Main Street Organization as an exploring downtown organization. There are three different levels of Main Street Organizations. Exploring is the beginning stage, then you go into transferring downtown, and finally performing downtown. Oregon Main Street has 63 participating Main Street Organizations throughout the state. Across the country, there are something like 2,200 cities that have Main Street Organizations in 40 states. It is a remarkable program, and I'm looking forward to seeing it really develop here in Salem. The Oregon Main Street Office, which is part of the Oregon Parks Development Office, provides assistance and training and technical services to communities to help strengthen their downtown organization, to revitalize historic places downtown, and to preserve and protect the organization. Some of the organizations in the, in the state that have strong programs, including Albany, Corvallis, McMinnville, McMinnville is kind of a poster child, and they, last year, they, in 2015, McMinnville was given a national award for its Main Street Program, was judged one of the five great Main Street Organizations throughout the country. These downtown organizations, these Main Street Organizations, conduct special events. They conduct street markets, food markets for the, for the farmers, and we hope to be able to do that sort of thing here in Salem as well. The benefits to the city are many in a Main Street Organization. In the five years between 2010 and 2015, Main Street Organizations throughout the country saw more than $75,000, $75 million in public reinvestment because of their organizational activities throughout, throughout the system. Our Main Street Organizations in Oregon derive their income from a variety of sources. Most of them receive some income from their city governments, and many of them also have developed either Economic Improvement Districts or Business Improvement Districts, EID or BID, to generate income. They also generate income through special events and other sales programs. We expect that we will be doing lots of those kinds of things in the years to come. We have a, an official goals and objective statements, mission statement, but I like to think of us as having this kind of a, sort of informal mission statement, which is that the Salem Main Street Association is the engine that harnesses the strengths of downtown supporters, draws people with the downtown's visual appeal, and drives livability and business vitality downtown. We're looking forward to working with Travel Salem because they want to help with downtown and create a more vibrant community for ourselves and our neighbors. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, John and Hazel. Where are we going next, then, with Main Street? What now will happen?
We're going to have a community event on April 20th, and we hope everyone will attend. It'll be at 6:30 at the Ike Box. It'll be to introduce to the public our program, and this Main Street Program is so well put together, but the focus of it is a Board of Directors that oversees committees, and the committees are the ones that get things done. And so things like streetscapes, things like cleaning the downtown, those kinds of issues are dealt with in committees, and we are very committed to, obviously, to working with the city and with other entities that have an impact on this downtown.
We've also met with the Downtown Advisory Board about the possibility of receiving some funds from the city through the parking fees, that we're looking forward to next year, receiving a budget allocation for helping us get, getting started on the right foot in next year.
So can we expect to see both of you or one of you here on a fairly regular, or once in a while, to kind of tell us what's going on with Main Street?
Sure.
Good. Well, I hope you'll.
I think we will be going through the budget process.
Can you speak into your mic, Hazel?
I, I believe we will be going through the budget process. As John mentioned, we have, are applying for monies from the parking tax.
Okay, great, great. Any, any questions? Councilor Kaser.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I worked with the Main Street Program at the state level for about five years. Main Street works. It's, it's a proven program. They have a four-point approach. There's a bunch of stuff online, but I'm really excited Salem is taking this on again.
Again, that's true.
Yeah, but I feel, I feel good about this go-around, so I'm really excited by it.
Thank you. Yeah, Salem did have a Main Street Organization years ago, and it fell by the wayside, but we're excited about getting it rewired and started up again.
Yeah, yeah. We all are. We're really happy to see you all doing this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Fry.
Evening, Mayor Bennett and City Council members. My name is Rich Fry. You saw me here with your last meeting on President of the Planning Commission. However, tonight I'm here just as a citizen of the city of Salem. My address is 777 Sahaly Drive, Southeast. We have a, we have an issue in our neighborhood that we have one entrance into our neighborhood, and we, we have approximately 100 home sites at this time, and there's a subdivision that went through the regular process. It was appealed, went to Luba, was remanded back to the city, and now has a new hearing coming up on the 4th in front of the Planning Commission. And the, the issue is that the new subdivision, the four lots, is going to do a fee in lieu of, meaning that there's money to be paid into a fund that will eventually build the road and the bridge that needs to be built for us to have a second entrance into our community. So right now, as I said, there's 100 home sites with one entrance. We had a tree fall down, no service could get in. If there was a fire, natural disaster, something like that, no one would be able to get in. With the fee in lieu of, there's another subdivision that abuts our subdivision that has 38 new lots that would come in and also use a single access. The fire code says anything over 30 has to have a second access unless you sprinkle the houses. And I met with the Deputy Fire Marshal, I also met with Peter Fernandez on several occasions to try to figure this out. We thought that we were going to have a resolution through the city, but the code simply says 30 or more, you need a second access, or the houses have to be sprinkled. There is no limitation. So is it 100 homes? Is it 200 homes? Is it 500 homes? You know, that you can have going through one entrance? It just doesn't make sense to me. But according to our code, the way that it is, there is no option for the fire marshal to say enough's enough. So I don't know how we address that. I don't know if it's a change to our code. I don't know if it's something in a resolution. Mr. Fernandez and I had a meeting just the other day. I thought that we were going to come to some kind of a resolution, but obviously his hands were tied as well. So I have another gentleman here that's going to speak on this matter, but I'm happy to take questions now if you'd like. And the, the first page of this thing kind of gives you an overview. The one little pink line at the bottom, or excuse me, the second page, is the one street that comes in, and the dotted pink line is a future road, that the city's now paying for the bridge, that the developer was supposed to do. The original was going to be $700,000, it's now $6 million, plus the road has to be built. So we have an issue here. I'm happy to take questions.
Well, how'd this happen, Rich? What happened here?
What happened was that during the time that the development was going on out at Creekside, 2008 came around, so there was a huge drop in the amount of property that was being sold, and the developer asked, hey, I need a little bit of help here. I can't afford to build the bridge and the road, and I want to build a few more lots. And so they were allowed to do that. And then later they came and they asked for a few more, they were allowed to do that. It's now gotten to the point where, where there aren't enough lots left to pay for the improvements that have to be done.
Mr. Fernandez, are you the?
Yeah. I appreciate Mr. Fry coming in. You know, Rich and I have had a lot of conversations about this, and, and this, this topic has been the subject of a number of Luba appeals and threatened lawsuits among the developer and the homeowners association, et cetera. And what we have very simply is that Lone Oak Street is a minor arterial that needs to be, that needs to bridge the, and I forget what creek that is, but it needs to bridge the creek. And originally, that project was the responsibility of the Creekside developer, and over time, they simply never built it, and there just aren't enough lots left for them to afford it. So, I mean, we could, we could say, hey, build it or you can't develop anything else, and, or, or until you build it, you can't develop anything else, but we don't believe that they, they will ever have the resources to build the bridge. So a couple of years ago, we entered into an agreement with the homeowners association that we would put some money in the CIP to, to assist in building the bridge. At the time, we thought the bridge was going to be about $1 million. We think it's a lot more now. We're doing some more analysis. So, so the, once that bridge is built, then we have a solution. The question is, is, does that await the next bond issue? Do we find some other funding? But in the meantime, we do have the issue that Mr. Fry brings up, that there's only one way in and out of that area where Sahaly connects to, and there are other parcels that are ready for development.
Well, let me, let me try this out on you, just to see, could we have some sort of staff analysis and staff report on this that gives us an avenue through this? It sounds like a pretty serious problem, both fiscally and, I guess if I live at one of these houses in here, I'd be a little nervous when I suddenly discover there's potentially no way in or out. Do you see what I mean? We may have multiple problems at work here.
What Mr. Fry brings up is absolutely correct. There's some, there's some safety issues, there's some fire code issues, there's some transportation issues, and there's some legal issues as to what we're going to, you know, if we decide to, to in essence, put a moratorium on development out there until the bridge is built, that's, those are very strong words.
Well, we have a financial, there's a financial issue here as well, and I think what would be helpful, because I really appreciate Mr. Fry bringing it to our attention, is really having the staff take a look at this and maybe give us a plan of action of some kind that we can begin to sort this out. There are so many moving parts being described. I don't think we can, I'm sorry, Rich, we can't do anything tonight.
No, I understand that.
But we can, we can begin to sneak up on the problem, I think, quickly.
Yeah, and there's some history here that I think it would be good for the council to just have kind of a summary of the, you know, those of us that are involved kind of have lived it, but certainly there's, there's plenty of new councilors that I think would benefit from knowing a little bit of the history as well.
Well, there's some old ones like to know, too, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, this is all very interesting stuff, Mr. Fry, and I guess you're here on Item 8, or things that are not in front of the council, because none of this is in front of the council now.
That's correct.
Took me a little while, but Director Fernandez, I'd also be interested as, into the history, because it seems at one point, the original developer was going to be responsible for this, and that was allowed to slide into slide into slide, and now we got a problem. And, you know, the problem, it becomes our problem, not the original developer's problem.
Correct.
And, you know, that doesn't sound good to me. And I'd also be curious about this new 38 lot development. Is that a different developer? If it is, is there some way that might be responsible for it?
I can respond to that if you'd like.
Sure.
The, the new development of 38 lots is a different developer, and they're just outside the Creekside PUD. However, this, this $9,000-plus dollar fee in lieu of, right now, they have to build the bridge and the road if they want to develop their subdivision. That's why they've been sitting since 2008. That's when their approval was done.
Hoping that the city would do it?
Hoping that either the developer that was supposed to do it would do it, or that the city would do it, or somebody would get together and do it, and they haven't. And so as soon as this four lot goes through, which four more houses really isn't going to make that big of a deal, but once, once the fee in lieu of goes through, now there's this 38, plus another 38 that's waiting, plus one that's twice that size. So there are a lot of lots out there that are waiting.
Yeah, a lot of moving parts. I agree with the mayor.
Before we go any further with this, I want to see if we're going to have to have a motion to get this in front of us, or where, how are we going to get this here? I don't want to sit here and debate this thing tonight.
I'm sorry.
No, we'll, we'll prepare the staff report that's been requested.
Is that satisfactory, that we will be getting a staff report, we will then have a recommended action, we can have a motion, and we can have a discussion with an outcome rather than kind of wander our way through this thing?
Three, four motions.
Is that okay? Okay. Councilor McCoy.
And in that staff report, I would hope you would explain to us how a planning decision that called for a bridge to be built by developer developing those lots, somehow, it's been gone, it's gone? Has it been abrogated? Was it, did somebody on the council say, okay, this is all done? Or did we just say, well, we went so far down the road, we're not going to enforce it anymore? I don't understand how that happened.
I'm sure they'll cover the history of this in detail.
I would also like the staff report to address that if it is a safety hazard for a certain number of houses with one entrance, how we can justify developing the other lots at this point while there is no additional access.
Yeah, and I'm sure they will take that up as well. Great, thank you very much.
And just one thing, I'll bring to your attention again, is that there is a hearing on this four lot subdivision on April 4th in front of the Planning Commission, which obviously I will recuse myself.
We'll count on you to do the right thing, then, Mr. Fry.
I won't, I will not be there as a planning commissioner. I may be there testifying that night, but I will not be there as a planning commissioner.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Don Wildfang, 6025 Lone Oak Road, Southeast, and I'm the chairman, or president of Creekside Homeowners Association, not to belabor it too much, but I just want to put an exclamation point on what Rich said, and the questions that I heard staff, or the council wanting to get staff to, to address are right on the money. Due to previous decisions by staff, what was originally agreed to has gone through multiple iterations. When a developer goes in and does a planned unit development in coordination with the city, his engineer factors in the cost of everything in that development, including this bridge and this street. So that developer has already taken the money out of the coffers of the city that the taxpayers are going to be asked to pay for. Currently, we find ourselves in a situation where we have lots approved and homes built on where homeowners have been promised egress on this property, and that hasn't happened for years now. As a, as a president of the HOA, especially this winter, monthly, we had complaints and concerns by our neighbors about egress, safety, ice and snow, and being able to get emergency vehicles to their homes if a situation arose. Liability issues as a taxpayer on this thing are huge, I'm afraid, and the city is exposed on this because we've been asking for it for years, and that's not a threat. None of us want any tragedy to happen or to have anything that's going to be adding additional costs to the city, because I'm a taxpayer here, too. Assurances. because I'm a taxpayer here, too. Assurances have been made by the city at planning commissions that the bridge was going to be paid for. Initially, when I sat in on the planning commission meetings, and it didn't sound like too much, maybe $750,000 for the bridge, oh, the city could absorb that. And I'm going, I don't think my neighbors are going to like to hear that. I live in Ward Four, and I'm pretty sure my councilman didn't want to hear that. Now, all of a sudden, the cost of this has ballooned to $6 million, and we may be two years away. If it went from $750,000 to $6 million, you don't have to, you know, be too smart to extrapolate what can happen after that. This council, each of you, has an obligation and an opportunity to explore this, and I'm really encouraged to hear that, what you're going to do, because that's what I'm asking for. And, you know, you need to be able to look at your constituents and explain to them why Ward Two is paying for a bridge and Ward Six that a developer has already gotten the profit out of. So...
Great. Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll hopefully have this on our agenda soon. Counselor McCoy?
I would also liken the report to have it explained how that bridge is going to cost $6 million when the one over here in Riverfront Park, which is probably five times as long, much more exotic, in the design and the building of it, is $6 million. I don't understand how this little bridge going over a 50-foot creek is going to cost as much as this bridge over here at Riverfront Park.
I'm sure we'll get light shone on that as well. Okay. Everyone satisfied, then? We're going to have this come back to us. Okay. Ryan McGindi.
Good evening. I live at 1117 Caillou Circle, Ward Four. I think Steve's Ward Four, I'm not sure. Anyways, I'm here to talk about trees in the city of Salem. I also wanted to give a shout out to Jan Stuswowski. I can't even say his name. But anyways, he has really done an excellent job with, he, he doesn't have the resources he needs, like other cities would have. So, you know, a lot of the stuff that he has to do is, makes it really hard for him to do his job, you know? And to try to get out there and plant more trees, he really wants to see, and I want to see, of course, is a more broader-range canopy of the trees here in the city of Salem. Different varieties and different types. I know, I talked to Jan, he said, he said that, well, once you get a plant at like a nursery that's, you know, they're going to use for the city of Salem, they usually, it has to be acclimated to our, our weather and stuff. And so they can't just bring something in. So like, well, usually what they do is they bring in like a small one. And they can't, they can't necessarily do that. So they have to, they have to bring one in. It has to be a certain size, and to be, it has to acclimate to the weather, and then they decide whether or not they're going to use that as a street tree. So the underline is, I think Jan Stuswowski is doing a tremendous job, very hard job, and I commend him. I would like to see a broader range of trees and more, I think, I just think flowering trees is really happy, makes the city, you know, entices investment opportunities, brings people in. They say, hey, you know, you're doing a really good job. I mean, your city's so nice. Look how clean it is. Look how, look how beautiful it looks. I want to invest with you. No, 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 no. I don't want to invest in Portland. I want to invest with Salem.
Ryan, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Ryan? Ryan, thank you for the emails and the postings on flowering trees. I enjoy them. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mark Connect.
Yes, my name is Mark Connect, and I, I just now moved. I'm in, I'm in Tom's ward now. And I was just looking at the schedule of Neighborhood Association's annual meeting. I guess I'm in the neighborhood, neighbor to neighbor, and they meet over at the Nazarene Church. But I do not see my old neighborhood in there, who the council's sitting over there. There, I don't, I don't see North Gate in here.
We just had our annual meeting.
We did? Okay. Well, Hazel, Hazel doesn't inform me once in a while. Well, anyway, I was real happy to participate. And we had priority one in this city, and I was very, very pleased to, our church, which is Baptist, participated, and a number of the other churches participated. And then on the 19th, 10th, that evening, our pastor had Chuck Bennett come down, the city manager, and the district attorney, and the school superintendent. And that was a real nice discussion. Our pastor narrated. The congregation did not get a chance to participate. But I'm going to do everything in my power. I can help Chuck do things. I do a lot of, obviously, work for veterans in this community. In fact, the new transition housing veteran place up there on Center Street is supposed to be open in April. Now, I can't confirm that one way or another, but it's supposed to be open. Well, anyway, that's why I wanted to do that. So, Tom, where is, where is the Neighborhood Association meeting going to be that I belong to?
I'm not sure what neighbor to neighbor is.
Well, they meet over, I'm in Ward Two.
Oh, Nazarene, that's NEN. That's NEN. They meet at the Nazarene Church.
You said what it was?
N-E-N, Northeast Neighbors. That's how you look it up, Mark, and that could tell you when their meeting is. And Counselor Kaiser and I both are, NEN is in both of our wards, mostly her ward, but...
Oh, I see. Okay.
Partly mine. So that's what you need to look at.
Okay. Okay, that's about all, all I have. But anyway, I'm going to do everything I can to help Chuck do things here in this community, and he can't do it alone. It takes a, what is the saying? It takes a village to raise a child. And we all have to do our part, folks. You can't, the government can't do it alone.
Well, Mark, thank you very much. Okay. Consent calendar, Counselor McCoy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar with the following poll. Item 3.3F by Counselor Anderson.
Second by Nanki. You want to go through it, then?
Yes. As you can see, if we're up to F, we've got quite a few things in the consent calendar. It starts with the minutes of the March 6th council work session, and also the March 13th council minutes. And we have 3.2 resolution and 3.2A is authorized as a transfer of $4.8 million in appropriations within utility front from contingencies to debt, to debt service for the purpose of debt prepayment. And prepaying this loan, which right now would go till, I think, 2033, is going to save us one, almost $2 million. And so that's the purpose of that appropriation. 3.2B is to transfer $37,500 of appropriation authority within the general fund from contingencies to materials and services for the purchase of expanding the planned development and community engagement activities of the city's current strategic planning initiative. As we've gone through the strategic plan, it's become apparent that the original plan needed some add-ons and some extra work in terms of work sessions and smaller groups working together, and that's going to cost us more money as we move forward to get to the final, final outcome. Under action items, 3.3A is an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Lafayette to accept wastewater treatment sludge, an exotic, if definitely else, little item. Yes. City of Lafayette is looking at their settlement ponds, and they want to get down and clean those out. And so while they're doing that, they have, we're reaching an agreement to accept up to 36,000 gallons of the treatment sludge daily at a specific set fee. So we're getting paid for that. And there's more in there if you want to read it. 3.3B authorizes the city manager to execute the attached intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation to provide up to 5,000 reimbursement funds to the city through the motor carrier safety action plan, which basically means we've got, I think, six to eight approved officers that can do inspections of commercial vehicles. And from time of this approval through June 1st, we can bill the state up to so much, an inspection, up to $5,000, as long as we document those. So we're basically paying to make, see what those commercial vehicles are as they come through town, whether they're operating safely, got the right equipment, and all those kinds of things. 3.3C preserving, this authorizes reservation of an area for a performance facility at the current location of the amphitheater in advance of completing a full master planning process for Riverfront Park. We've got the Rotary saying that they will build basically a cover, more than a cover, but a cover over the stage, including hold the lights and all that stuff up for, with some other buildings. It's, it's a large process. But to make sure, as they go into the fundraising phase, that they've got the land to build that once they raise the money, which will be a couple of years down the road, we're reserving that for this, this, this building. In the future, it'll be a great addition to the park. Item 3.3D, we want to extend the cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon through June, I think it's June, through June. This has been going on for a number of years, if we've negotiated what we want, what we're trying to do. We're getting it down to smaller increments. We're down to two or three months now from six months or a year. 3.3E, purchase and sale agreement with Pond's Family Trust. This is for the purchase of a building at 1700 and 1770 Water Street Northeast for use by Capital Community Television. Is their new, I guess, studio and, and place to park their trucks and those kinds of things. This comes out of funds that come from our franchise fees and are set aside for facilities in use by the, am I getting close there? The city manager's looking at me.
You're close, but the studio might have been one step too far.
Too far? Okay, no studio, just the building.
Truck storage and training.
Yeah.
And 3.3G is an added item, and that's positioned on a legislative priority bill, House Bill 3245, which the city of Salem has proposed and is active, wants to promote, and we need to be, have council approval for them to go out and lobby for the passage of that bill. And that's the consent calendar.
Very good. Any questions? No? Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll go to public hearings. If you want to read the...
Yes. The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering a vacation of public right-of-way located south of Almsville Highway Southeast and east of Kubler Boulevard Southeast. The criteria that are applicable to the decision are ORS 271.080 to 271.230 and SRC 255.065. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. And a similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The city council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Great. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Gamalo. I'm a transportation planner with the Public Works Department, and I would like to enter the staff report into the record, please. This is a public hearing to consider a petition submitted by the state of Oregon to vacate an unopened right-of-way located south of Almsville Highway Southeast and east of Kubler Boulevard Southeast within the boundaries of the Mill Creek Corporate Center. It is located in Ward Three here in the southeast portion of the city. The right-of-way was formerly an unimproved road. It is located outside the current traveled portion of Kubler Boulevard Southeast, remains unimproved, and is not needed currently for transportation purposes. As described in the staff report, the vacation meets the criteria necessary for approval. A technical error was made with the notices posted at the site of the proposed vacation. In the event that any member of the public requests additional time to review the proposed vacation, staff would recommend the council continue the public hearing to address this notice error. To conclude, staff recommendation is to approve the vacation of the right-of-way, subject to the condition that the petitioner pay an assessment of special benefit as described in the staff report. Thank you for your time, and I can take any questions you have now or after any public comment.
Why don't we do public comment first?
Sure.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren Brightman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Darren Brightman, representing Oregon Department of Administrative Services. As I believe pretty much all of you know, the Mill Creek Corporate Center is a joint venture between the city of Salem, the Urban Rural Agency, and the Department of Administrative Services. In recognition of that, in the past, when we have vacated right-of-way, as you will see in your packet, we'll have a copy of Ordinance 6905 from 2005, specifically called out the, in section four, the assessment of special benefit was not to be assessed. And it is our position that, given the nature of the relationship, the nature of the development, that it is appropriate to waive the assessment for this project as well. Any questions?
That's it? That's all you want? Okay. Well, I think probably our question, yeah, I'm going to explain that just for a second. Run that by us real slowly.
Certainly.
Okay. What are we charging you for this special benefit?
$51,000.
Okay, and you want that...
In addition to the $3,700 in fees.
And you want that waived?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So how about this money? What do you think?
As part of this process, we refer this matter to our Real Property Services Division, and they calculated for us that the land which is zoned Employment Center is valued at $2 per square foot, which comes to the, it's not quite $51,000, it's $50,900 and change, but $51,000. And, yeah, and the, the value is, is estimated based on the property rights conveyed, conditions of sale, market conditions. My understanding is that this is a city process that we go through.
Right, Mayor. It's the, it's, it's council policy to assess, an assessment of special benefit for vacated rights-of-way. I believe there was another vacation in Mill Creek Corporate Center where council waived the assessment. You certainly can waive the assessment.
So we have waived it.
That's the value of the property, but you have the ability to waive it.
Yeah. Mr. Brightman's contention is that we have a relationship, a special relationship, and we have waived this assessment in the past. Do I understand that's what...
We have a very special relationship with the Department of Administrative Services.
Counselor Anderson.
I've got a couple of questions, and I probably should have asked this to Mr. Brightman before he left. But what the state would intend to do with this is sell it to a developer at some point.
Yes? Right, that's correct.
Yeah. And so in that situation, I don't know which way I'm going to go on the waiver issue, but if they pay us $50,900, I presume they're going to try to recoup that $50,900... but if they pay us $50,900, I presume they're gonna try to recoup that $50,900 out of the sale price.
Right, a lot of the, in fairness to, uh, to Mr. Brightman, the, uh, the sale proceeds, uh, some portion of the sale proceeds go back into doing, uh, infrastructure improvements in and around the site. Uh, so there've been a number of water improvements, sewer improvements, storms, streets. So, uh, so that's where that money goes. Uh, if the assessment-
Question, excuse me. So that money goes, does that mean the city is paying for those improvements and we're getting them back from what I know is not SDCs and what I know is not DDFs? It's some other acronym?
No, you had the second one.
Okay, okay.
So, right, it's, it's, uh, it's development district fees, uh, there's an urban renewal district out here that funds, that, that funds those things.
So that, that money is being, if the state pays it to us and we use it for, um, infrastructure, we get that money back from the, um, uh, the developers under some system of the equivalent of SDCs.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so if we waive it, we still are gonna get some money back from the developers with the DDS.
Right.
Okay, okay. And I know we've waived it in the past, is that, well, I know now we've waived it in the past. Are, were the circumstances of that waiver materially different than the potential circumstances of this waiver?
No.
Okay, and do you have any idea, you know, why the council did this? I don't know. Was I on the council when it happened? If it was, I don't know, but is it because of our special relationship with the state?
Yes, and on this project.
Yes, on this project.
Not especially in general, on this project in particular.
Yeah, I understand that, okay.
Yes.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, are there any other unused rights-of-way in the entirety of the Mill Creek Corporate Center property? And why wouldn't we have just done them all at once back then?
I don't know if there are others, if, uh, you know, the, uh, the State of Oregon as the developer drives the bus on these kinds of things. Sometimes I think this parcel in particular is, uh, has been sold or is in the process of being sold. So it may have shown up on the title report where before it wasn't, uh, uh, Ms. Rutherford, you know, is, is at the, you know, point of the spear on this issue, so I don't know.
Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. It's my understanding that this right-of-way that's being vacated had been county right-of-way and it, the need to vacate this really didn't come to everybody's awareness until they were recently going through a development process. And through that survey and plat- partition process, then this piece of right-of-way was identified and with the need to vacate it. Uh, about 75% of this vacation, I believe, will go to the adjacent parcel for development and about 25% of it will be included in a wetland area. But, um, it, it was not included in prior vacations because I think that it was just kind of one of those that wasn't on the radar until it was picked up by the surveyor.
Okay, Ms. Rutherford. Councilor Cook.
So it sounds like if it's in the process of a transaction, that the price has already been suggested. So the opportunity to recoup expenses at this point is a done deal.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any, yes, Councilor Anderson.
Councilor Chris asked my first question. Uh, my second question is on the, you know, Google Earth view we have up there. Where's the 75% and where's the 25%? Where are the wetlands on that situation?
This whole area is wetlands right here.
So it's in the middle?
Yeah.
So, and then going up to the, kind of the triangle there, just looking at it, it's got the more brown sort of, uh, area on the, on the bird's eye view. Is that already part of wetlands?
Well, I'm not sure.
Right there where your cursor is right now and going down.
Um, I'm not sure about this small portion here.
No, I just mean where it's brown, the big, big brown.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yes, this, this is, uh, this is wetlands, yeah.
So the, the only part, the 75% looks like it's the northwest end of that piece of property. So, uh, it doesn't really go much north and west of the yellow line there, does it? The, the land that the state is selling?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion? You ready?
No, I don't.
Do you have any questions?
The public hearing is still open.
Oh, we're still open. What do you want to do? Want to close it yet? Are we done?
Ask if there's any further questions.
Got any more questions? Can I close the public hearing? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we waive the special assessment.
Second.
Second by Cook.
And it, just to speak to that, I, this is a partnership between us all. I mean, we've, we've given and taken back and forth on, on lots of infrastructure pieces as well and, um, it shows being a, a good partner as well, I think.
So, so this is an amendment?
Counselor, did you, okay, I-
To, to vacate but waive the, uh, so staff recommendation with the modification that we waive the payment of special assessment.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Does anyone have a second public hearing?
We have a second public hearing. This one is just, this doesn't open, right?
Right, so this is, um, item 4B is a public hearing in which you closed the public hearing at your last meeting and so, um, now we're scheduled for deliberations this evening.
There's one where we didn't know.
Okay, Councilor Anderson.
Oh, yeah.
I move the staff recommendation.
Does someone second that?
McCoy did.
McCoy did?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Councilor Anderson, do you want to speak?
Well, thanks. Um, I, I know this is concerned with the current case on annexation come out of Happy Valley and I think at, uh, at the past meetings, we were informed by the city attorney that, um, that's the law now and we need to follow it even though there may have been some appeals in the issue in Corvallis. And so it just seems to me that, um, since we're not directly a party to that, we've got the law and we, we need to follow what the law says. So I'm in favor of this motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, special orders of business. Now, did we have the legislative calendar pulled or not? Yeah, okay. So, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I'm on that committee and I wasn't able to be there, um, for, um, business reasons. And I've had a few people talk to me about the particular bills that, that I asked to be pulled and so I thought we could pull them and have a discussion about them. And I, I think I'd like to have a discussion before I make a motion, if that's possible. Should I make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, for the purposes of making a motion, uh, that I, Mayor, may not end up voting for completely, uh, I, I move that we, uh, approve the legislative priorities as contained in the, uh, item 3.3F.
Second.
Second by McCoy. And Counselor, do remember you can record no votes, obviously, you don't need to.
I plan on adding that in here in a moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
We'll look for you at the next meeting, though, rather than discuss these.
Yes, well, well, I think my trial will be over.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, I'm thinking of a spiritual here, but I won't sing it, okay?
Feeling like I'm helping with that trial right now.
Yeah. Uh, uh, my question really, I, I tell you, the ones that I pulled and I looked at, I'm, um, and I see that, um, Director Hanson is here, so I don't know if you're here on that issue and I'll try to get, you can go home, so I'll ask you that. And that is, uh, 3087, um, which creates the family medical leave and insurance program. And my question is, is the real concern and the recommendation that we oppose is because of the cost that it would impose upon the city?
Uh, Counselor, my name Hanson.
Call your, call your mic.
Yeah, mic.
Uh, Director of HR, my name Hanson. It's in part the cost and it's also the disconnect in the bill itself. So the cost to the city, if we implemented this as written, would be about $473,000 annually.
That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna be going for that one. I mean, uh, uh, I have personal views, but I also am representing the council and the city and I, I can see that we don't need to spend that extra money. We've got other things we can spend it on. Then, um, I, I, I'm a little concerned or have some questions about 20007 and I left a message with Andy Wilch about this, but he wasn't able to return it. So I'm wondering if, um, I think the concern there is it pre-exempts local, pre-exempts local authority. I think that's the major concern. Uh, I don't know if anybody could speak to that.
Yes, Glenn Gross, Committee Development Director. That is the primary reason that we are recommending to oppose on this is a preemption of local authority.
And I would guess that as I read this, I think we're already doing much of this in the housing authority. So, um, I, I would guess this legislation is really more directed at towns that really aren't doing much with respect to affordable housing. Would that be a fair statement? You're shrugging your, you're shrugging your shoulders. Come on, this is your last meeting, Glenn.
Well, I, I'd rather not speculate on the, on the, on the reason for the bill, but, uh-
Yeah, yeah, well, I can speculate and so I don't have any issue with that. And then the final one is the, is the rent issue. And I will just have to say that I do have an issue with that because I think there, you know, our, our goal here is how do we, how does this relate to city governance? And I know that there are people in the city, you could say it from the landlords, landlords and the renters, who feel on both sides of this, this situation, so, um-
Let me, let me call your attention that this was opposed at the request of the police department.
Okay, okay. Well, I still would like to, um, my, I would prefer it to just be monitored, but I can understand what the police department, so having-
I think I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine if Jerry would like to talk to us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. Uh, the, the police department's concern is, uh, the impact on livability in neighborhoods, quite frankly, because, uh, there are ways to evict problem tenants immediately if there's a egregious, uh, issue. Uh, but many times there are issues, uh, that neighborhoods complain to the police department about over and over and we may go investigate, we may try and get in a house, we may be denied consent, yet neighbors continue to call us, uh, over and over. And so landlords use the tool of evicting someone within 30 days just to help the neighborhood.
And that's, uh, that's for basically month-to-month leases is what we're talking about. I mean, in 30 days. If you, if you've got a, if, if you've got a signed lease, I don't think you can just evict them for that purpose. And I'm looking at Natasha.
Yeah, the bill specifically is to month-to-month leases.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the legislative agenda. Does anyone want to register a no vote on anything? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to register three no votes, um, one on House Bill 2126 regarding firearm transfers, another on House Bill 2597 regarding use of electronic mobile devices and the penalty increase, and then thirdly on House Bill 3246, which is essentially taking away local control by making statewide regulations in regard to transportation network companies.
These were handled in that legislative committee.
Well, and I said I'd bring it forward and I would-
Yeah.
Uh, register my no votes here.
Well, I'm gonna ask that those three be pulled from the agenda. There was a vote on those in that legislative committee that indicated that, uh, the legislative committee did not recommend opposition to those, is my recollection. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and read those minutes and find out what happened there.
Uh, we, we did, Mr. Mayor, we did, um, not bring one of those forward at all and, and just removed it from the agenda, but I thought these were, um, pushed through from that. Because I remember the pawnbroker one going through because we have to take pictures of everything. Um, mobile device one, we had spoke to, the statewide transportation network essentially mirrors kind of what our regulations are, but to me it's still a local control thing. Anytime the state tries to take away our ability to, uh, regulate what happens in our boundaries.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor McCoy.
And on the statewide, on the Uber deal, right? That's when you're talking about the network. I, I said I didn't really object, but I, I seconded your motion to bring it to the floor here-
Okay.
Out of the committee.
Okay.
I would also like to register no vote on that one.
Okay, so let's get all the no votes together here in one place. What are you voting no on?
32, House Bill 3246.
Okay.
I, I very much appreciate the police department's position on this, but I'm gonna register a no on 2240.
Okay. And, and Brad, what, what would you like to vote no on?
I gave my very strong answer.
Did you get her, did you get his list?
If you could repeat that.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, all House Bills 2126, 2597, and 3246.
Anyone else? Yes?
Thank you. I'd like to register no on House Bill 2240.
Okay. Okay.
And 2240 as well for me.
Okay.
Ditto for me.
Okay, so-
2240.
2240, okay. We're gonna then, uh, change our recommendation on 2240 to support, right?
I would clarify just neutral.
Yeah, monitor.
As neutral, oh, you don't want to support, you just don't want to be-
Right, right. Monitor because of what I said, there's citizens in this community on both sides.
So you want it to be monitor?
Yes, yes.
Let's get a motion to that effect.
Okay, I move that, uh, we change the, uh, opposition on, uh, House Bill 2242, monitor.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, passes. And then we've got a, let's, uh, let's try it one more time now that we got everybody on the record on where they want to be on this thing. And next time let's all try to, yeah.
I promise to be at the next meeting, even if it means I have to avoid a court date.
Okay.
Okay.
Give me a, give me a motion then on approving the remainder of this, would you, Glenn?
Since I pulled that, I move we, uh, uh, adopt, uh, the recommendation of the legislative subcommittee on, uh, every bill presented except for 2240, which we voted on to change to monitor.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. We have information reports. Oh, a special order on, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we got a motion.
That's exciting. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight I'm making a request to give resources to welcome someone with a perspective that will give us common ground in addressing the conflicts surrounding transportation, growth, and livability in our community. Now, Dan Burden has been called the Johnny Appleseed of pedestrian and bicycle design. He has set the standard as a walkable and livable community guru for entire generation of community leaders. He's been working since the 1970s to design communities to be fun to move in, safe for all modes of travel, and based on sound design. He creates advanced environments for advanced opportunities. If we're willing to do the work, Salem could have a community where you don't age out of your home. We could design on a human scale and give children the freedom to navigate their neighborhood before getting behind the wheel of a car. The $1,000 I'm asking for is being matched by AARP and the National Partnership for Safe Routes to School. These groups are excited Salem is moving forward to protect our older and younger residents. Dan Burden has an excellent history of working with ODOT and other Oregon communities in addition to his work across the globe. It's a good investment for the city to gain professional development in the area of livability as we prepare for an increasing population. We've had too many people injured or killed by cars when they're only trying to get from point A to point B. Our staff will benefit from new perspectives on how to meet the needs of multiple modes of travel. We must keep addressing this issue as long as it's not safe to walk. We must keep addressing this issue as long as it's not safe to walk or bike on our public roads. At this critical junction, when we are debating how to develop and maintain public infrastructure, we need to remember how we travel to our city spaces. We can't forget the importance of the public square and how we interact with each other. If cars are happiest when the roads are empty and you can drive like on the commercials, and populations are projected to increase, we need to think creatively to manage the predicted road rage that could result from poorly planned communities. And if people are happiest when others are around, like when we're talking right now, how can we increase the livability of people already living here as more come into our community? Dan Burden can show us the untapped beauty and potential we have in our greatest community-owned assets, our public streets. By welcoming Dan Burden to our community, we can work to cultivate and preserve a quality community while protecting our natural environment and take the stress out of driving, walking, or biking. We can ensure that residents are part of a welcoming community even without a driver's license. The city has funding for several active transportation projects, but our current sidewalk prioritization focuses on moving from downtown core outwards with no prioritization around neighborhood centers or schools. Our current method of sidewalk inventory and prioritization has not been audited in over 20 years, and this may not be completely correct, so Peter Fernandez, feel free to give me the exact dates on that. But we will do well to solve this issue with partners in our communities. The public streets in our capital city could be welcoming to all modes of travel and an open process of evaluation. Hosting this event is important to foster community involvement in our transportation and planning. We must be mindful in seeking solutions and take a holistic view on development. Over 200 people attended the last open house for the Winter Maple Family Friendly Bike Way. It's important we listen and respond accordingly. By voting yes, you'll be sending a courageous message that you are intentionally leaking, linking, and leveraging the efforts of the whole community to galvanize efforts for safe streets. This motion is proof that our council serves the needs of the community and will work effectively to achieve unity in our shared spaces. Now, we know our community better than Dan Burden, I will admit, but just as an individual knows their own body better than a doctor, Dan Burden can help us identify the symptoms that keep our roads clogged, like the arteries to our heart of our community. He can identify the health of our public spaces like the lungs that inhale the air around us. Once we get a diagnosis, the work is still on us to improve our environment, just like it's up to all of us to eat right and exercise. It'll be up to us to take his assessment into account when we evaluate our policies. Now, in order to make our streets healthy, first we have to decide that we don't want to be stuck in traffic. We have to decide we want kids to learn how to cross the street before high school. We have to make it a priority to design safe, pleasant places to walk and bike, to schools, shops, and parks. We have to be bold to find common ground for public transit, sidewalk, and biking paths, businesses, and schools. We have to make sure we prioritize healthy streets, homes, and healthy residents, and that we're willing to frame our policies accordingly. If we take this step today, we will have safer, more prepared, independent community tomorrow, and we will support a more resilient city. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Nakey.
Thank you. I was waiting for Casey to flip on the red light.
Sorry.
And one of the reasons I'm here originally was because of pedestrian safety on 12th Street, and it's interesting to think about our sidewalk prioritization based on.
Downtown core.
Schools.
Right.
Rather than necessarily a big swing, less swing, schools maybe, and then come back in. Counselor Tarter, two counselors from Word 5 ago, actually, when we went to DC for one of the NLC events, brought back the Safe Routes to School thing, and was pushing that fairly hard as well.
Safe Routes to School is a phenomenal program.
And in our case, a lot of it is the fact that we just don't have sidewalks in a lot of those war-era neighborhoods, so.
Sir, K, any?
Be interesting to kind of see where that.
Counselor K.
Procedureal point of clarification, is there actually a motion on the table?
I thought you were making a motion.
Yeah, she made her first.
Yeah, I thought she made a motion.
Who seconded?
I am asking for your request.
I don't know, maybe she just kept ripping on to where.
You seconded, Brad.
Well, let's tag it.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question at the very end.
Very long motion.
I'm wondering if there's a, said, I move city council participate in this unique opportunity by endorsing the event and providing in-kind and financial support of up to $1,000. Are you talking about, I mean, there might be an Oxford comma missing there to be clear, but is that financial support of up to $1,000, not also the in-kind?
That is not also the in-kind, correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's all right, and I fully appreciate the Oxford comma and would like to note that at this point.
And when will it be? Will it be, sorry?
Just a minute, let's chat this out on the side. Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, I just want the counselor to note that I'm not the only one who discusses esoteric grammatical matters, but I'm wondering if it is city money, let's say it's not in-kind, but there's $500, if the city manager could comment, where did we get that $500?
I think it's $1,000 is what my ask was.
Okay, $1,000 in-kind, I'm saying.
No, 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 $1,000 cash.
Okay, okay.
In-kind, staff.
Okay, then, I'm sorry, then where does $1,000 come from?
Counselor Cook, I'll call on you, and it's your turn.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Transportation Services Fund, $1,000 from the Transportation Services Fund.
And that money is available and?
That money is available.
All right, all right.
Okay. Counselor Cook, did you want to speak further on your motion?
Oh, this is going to be May 24th. He will, he's already up in Portland right now doing more activities, and during the Winter Maple Family Friendly Bike Way, Cory Slosshauer from the National Partnership asked me, you know, we've got this opportunity for Dan Burden to come down, and Julie Yip from ODOT Bike and Ped Coordinator said, oh, yeah, I know about Dan Burden, he's great. And I kind of asked, you know, Kevin and Anthony and other city staff, what do we think? And we've been engaging with the community to rally the support if this is something that the city would also want to work with. So right now, the way that it would work, it would be an all-day event, not a half, and we could also have events throughout the week, because it's obvious that people do want to engage. And they, as you were speaking, Counselor Nakey, they have a need within their own community, not just the downtown core, although that is a vital service. There's a way we can create safe routes.
Counselor K.
Thank you. Is it free? Is there a charge for people to participate?
I, it will be, so Dan Brennan likes to come during the day for staff development, be a morning staff session that we can evaluate current projects that have already received funding for. When I spoke with Director Fernandez, he wanted to make sure to get that insight and input about projects that are already underway. And city staff had also spoke about the importance of not losing that momentum, because many businesses are, we're going to want to make sure that everybody's on board with the Family Friendly Bike Way going through. Dan Burden likes to disappear in a city for a little bit to take a look and see how projects are going. He'll probably do that here. In addition to safe roads and safe routes, he also is a public spaces guru. So I'm sure he'll be very interested in the pavilion idea for Riverfront Park and gathering places, parks, just kind of give a diagnosis. And in the evening, we can have an event. Pringle Hall, it has been suggested, would be a good hosting site. The Anderson Room for the library during the day would be a great place to put up staff posters to showcase what we're doing and have some professional development.
Okay. Okay, any further questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now information reports. Any questions, comments?
I just want to thank the council very much for voting for my first motion.
Okay, ordinances, first readings.
Yes, ordinance bill number 417 relating to changes to the Salem area comprehensive plan map designation and the neighborhood plan map designation for 4220, 4230, and 4240 Sunny D Road Northeast.
Counselor McCoy, do you want to make a motion on this?
Okay, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Counselor Anderson.
Well, unless Counselor McCoy has any discussion, it's his motion. Okay. I just want to say that when I said Happy Valley, I was wrong on Happy Valley on the first case, and I want to, Happy Valley relates to this case, not the annexation case, and I want to thank the Assistant City Attorney for not correcting me in mid-stride, although I'm happy, I get, that happens from the reels, the city attorney, so you have my permission, if I'm wrong, tell me that right away. But this is the Happy Valley case, and I, you know, we've got to comply with it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those, is that how we do it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Did anyone else want to address counsel? I've got a public comment. Did you want to? I'm looking at you. Just checking in, okay. Okay, if there's no objection, counsel's adjourned.